Good evening. I'm going to call to order our September 4th meeting, the Baldwin County Planning and Zoning Commission, and ask at this time if you will stand with us as we have a prayer and a pledge of allegiance. Father, we're thankful to you for this, for this day, and we're thankful to you, Father, especially for the fact that we represent a great county. We're fortunate to live here. We pray, Father, that as citizens of this county, we're good stewards of it. We're thankful for all of our elected officials, our first responders, for our county staff, all that make this a good place to live. So, Father, we now ask your wisdom and insight on this group as we make decisions tonight, and we do things that are best for this county. We pray that we each here tonight honor you and respect each other in what we do. Pray this in the name of Jesus. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'm going to call the role, Brandon Bias, Robert Davis, Scott Schamberger, Michael Mullik.
Here.
Greg Seibert.
Here.
Jamie Stradiger.
Here.
Diane Burnett.
Here.
Michael Fletcher.
Here.
George Waters.
Here.
Reed Key. Okay, we have a call. At this time, you've each received a copy of the minutes of the August 7th meetings, our regular meeting, our work session, and a review meeting. So, I would entertain a motion if those minutes be approved unless there's any comments or corrections.
So moved.
All right. Mr. Seibert's made a motion if the minutes be approved. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Mullik, second the motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Those are approved. All right, we have, we've already been through our agenda in our work session. So, I would like to have a motion that our agenda be, proposed agenda be approved. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Okay. You have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, so we're going to take our first item, which is not a public hearing item. We actually had the public hearing on this item a while back. So, we're going to go ahead and do this item first, and then our planning director will come up after that and have some words to say. So, let's go to our first item then, which is the Magnolia Glen subdivision, SPP 25-06. Ms. Waters?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And just as a recap here, this case was originally presented at the June 5th meeting. And the motion of that meeting from the planning commission was to table this request to allow the applicant to provide staff with possible additional information regarding the concerns of the capacity for the Fort Morgan sewer treatment plant. So, as of today, staff can say that we have reached out to ADM. And we have been notified that no new information regarding a permit expansion for the treatment plan has been issued to date.
Okay.
Therefore, our conditions are still the same. I'd be happy to go over the staff report in the presentation if you'd like me.
I don't think there's a less somewhat in plan, but I think, anybody feel like you need that? Okay, I don't think that's necessary.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, for the record, just a point of clarity, when we discuss, you know, capacity issues, what is meant by that, you know, our assessment is based on ADM publicly available records, and that's where we make our assessment. We're talking about during the peak tourist season of the year. That's typically where we're seeing this from, you know, starting in May and then run through maybe August. So, just those summer months is what we're talking about with capacity issues. Now, the rest of the year, the plant has no problem, and that's public data. So, we just want to make that clarification for the record.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, anybody have any questions for staff? All right, any discussion?
Is that capacity, storage capacity, or processing capacity? Or is it all combined?
I'm not going to get into the details of that. That's an ADM assessment. The county does not go in and perform assessments of a plant facility. That's not what we do. We rely on ADM. They're the regulatory agency that oversees that, and we rely on that publicly released data that's provided from there. So, I'm not at liberty to get into those type of details.
So, Frank, was your comment earlier then about the seasonal capacity, was that from ADM?
Yes, sir. That's off ADM web, public website.
Okay. All right.
I have a question, and maybe this is probably for Jay. Jay, how do we typically handle subdivision applications that are incomplete?
So, it depends on what's outstanding. If there's any major deficiency, they are basically not accepted as complete and not processed to come to the planning commission. If it's minor deficiencies, you'll see, you have some conditional approval on that. And in cases like this, where there's some outstanding federal or state permit that is tied to the development or the infrastructure needed for the development, our regulations allow that, that we can make that a conditional approval because section 4.5.7 says no, no development may proceed until all required local, state, and federal permits have been issued. So, anytime we have something that's going on with the core of engineers or a state agency like ADM, if they're in process trying to, to, you know, get the required permits, we'll accept the application and process it. But, you know, because our regulations don't allow it to go to construction until it's all resolved anyway.
So, basically, if we approve this, it's, they can't go out there and start moving dirt.
That's correct.
Thank you. All right. I am going to let the applicant's representative, Wayne, if you want to speak, I mean, we've got the report from staff, but if you want to speak to that, I'm going to let you do that since you represent the developer.
Dwayne Smith, anchor engineering. So, what I'll also say while I'm here, Baldwin County Sewer is here if you would like to ask them some questions. I think they would be willing to come up and talk. But I think what Jay was saying with state and federal permits, in this situation applies. You know, basically, we're waiting for a permit to come through. Getting beyond this state to be able to go through and submit plans and go through that plan review and approval process, that's considerable time. You know, it can easily be a five, six month process. So, I think it would be reasonable to at least get to that process so that we, everything's approved within the subdivision itself. And then the permits or the, whatever the solution is to provide the capacity could then be provided. And obviously, things could not move forward without staff approval of whatever documents are provided. But like I said, the owner's here and the, who was not here last time, and Baldwin County Sewer's here if you maybe would like to ask them some questions.
Yeah. All right. Any other comments? I'm debating whether. No, I'm just going to, I'm just going to leave it up to us. Let's go ahead and, unless anybody on the planning commission wants to ask questions of the owner and the representative from Baldwin County Sewer. I think we've got the information from staff and nothing new there, so.
I think I'd like to hear from the sewer company.
Okay.
See what they have to say.
All right, so if the representative for the sewer company wants to come up, we have a question for you.
Good afternoon.
Give us your name if you will.
Jerry McManus.
Okay. Michael?
Yeah, so kind of explain to us what's going on down there. I realize that you're waiting for a permit. You have storage capacity, but you can't use it?
If it's okay, I'd like to start from the beginning. First of all, there's a sewer line adjacent to the subject property. So, when we get our permit from ADM, we're going to do nothing. The capacity in the line, the line is already there. The developer will hook up, and they'll have sewer service. That's as it relates to the collection system and the line adjacent to the property. Now, regarding the plant itself, all wastewater treatment plants are built with what's called a surge capacity. Unlike other utilities, we have to take what we're given. We're not on the front end providing. You know, the electrical companies know exactly, you know, what voltage is going to your, to your home. The water meter, excuse me, the water company knows exactly what size water meter that you've got at your home. On the other hand, we don't know what you're going to put down your drains. We have to just take what we get. And so, with that being the case, all of the plants are engineered with a surge capacity. So, it can go far above what you're permitted for and far above your constructed capacity. That's important to understand. Right now, our flows at the Fort Morgan plant, as Mr. Lundey indicated, we do have peak flows, just like Orange Beach and Gulf Shores. We're thankful for those peak flows. Those peak flows are important to our economy. You know, last year, we had over 6 million tourists come into the county. They provide a lot of jobs. They provide a high quality of living. We accommodate those flows with that surge capacity. We're currently working with ADM to increase our permit. As you said, Mr. Fletcher, it's a process capacity. It's not a storage capacity. But in so acknowledging that, that's where the surge capacity comes in. The surge capacity is there, which allows us, it's like a belt. You know, after Thanksgiving, you loosen your belt a little bit, right? So, that plant has that constructed capacity for those surge events. And all of ours happen predominantly July and August. That's the peak time. We all know when you're trying to get from one side of the county to the other during those weekends, it's almost impossible to get from one side to the other. So, having said that, our plant already has the components in place. They're already there. And we're just waiting on ADM to give us a permit. So, what we've got is just a permit, we've got constructed capacity without a permit. And one of the questions that I've, that I've wrestled with in trying to do our part to help the, the county accommodate the growth and provide for our high quality of living is just understanding the conditions because, you know, subdivisions are approved all the times based upon conditions. A turnout, a bigger water line, a substation. And we've always committed to, and we've always accomplished these conditions that y'all put on us in the past with taking a sewer line to a development and so on and so forth. So, back to the plant, everything is there. We're waiting on a permit. Our permit is in front of ADM right now. It's under review. They have a timeline that, you know, can be, you know, between X and Y. It's hard for me to explain and give you any details. It's not predetermined. They don't have any time limits that they will have you an answer or some sort of a preliminary guideline that you need to follow to get an answer. That doesn't exist. But it's just important to understand that the constructed capacity is there. We're waiting on a permit. The plant has surge capacity. And as of this, as of today, our average flows are under 900,000 gallons per day for the year. And we had six days where we exceeded our permitted capacity for the past 12 months.
Do you have other facilities within the county besides Fort Morgan?
We do.
Can you redirect that flow?
Each service area is designed around the plant. Think of it like a spider web. You know, when you see that spider web in your garden in the mornings or in the afternoon, in your garage, you've got the center, and then you've got the web. That's the way a treatment capacity is, I'm sorry, that's the way a treatment system is designed. The plant is the center of the web, and then all of the lines branch out from there. And hydraulics comes into a large part of the design because, you know, we would love to put 12-inch lines everywhere, but you wouldn't get the flow needed to keep the lines cleared out. It would collect, build up, and then before long, you wouldn't have any transmission ability to get flows to the plant. So, ideally, each system serves and stands on its own. There is some ability to transfer flows. We could transfer flows in some of the outer areas, but predominantly and optimally, you want each service territory to stand on its own simply because of the way it has to be designed from density of development, distance between developments, number of lift stations, distance between the lift stations, and so forth. So, again, ideally, you want each service territory to be its own, but we are interconnected with all of our plants. We can and have shifted flows at different times.
Mr. McManus, how, just for the sake of, you know, clarity, how long has this permit been in process?
We first filed the initial permit June 30th, 2023. We went back and made some revisions. We just made the most recent and final revision this past August. And we had a meeting with ADM this past April. And we had a representative communicating with them approximately three weeks ago. And they have taken a look at our amended permit, and they've provided some preliminary feedback. And so, we're expecting, based on what we've heard, additional comments from ADM within the next three to four months.
Okay, any other questions?
I have a question, Mr. McManus. So, if it's three to four months, is, do you think that that's the timeline to get the, to get the permit? Or earlier, you were saying that it could be anything because it could be from A, X to Z.
I just didn't want to speak for ADM.
Right, okay.
You know, they, they have, you know, and it's like other governmental entities. If you say, how long is it going to take me to get my tax return? You'll get a, you know, from three to six, six to nine week type interval as an answer. I think that's reasonable to have a draft permit, you know? And then there's the possibility that, you know, they may want to have a public hearing or something regarding that. But I think that's reasonable to have a draft permit and to be probably close to the point you would know about when you would have your final answer.
And if it's not done by the time that the development is ready or the application is ready for the next point, is that when you'll decide to send it to a different location?
Yes. That's right. When y'all give preliminary plat approvals. When y'all give preliminary plat approvals, I don't know of any utility companies that rush to construction to provide capacity because there's a real condition or a real possibility that that development may not get built. I mean, you know, they could buy a lot of tickets tonight, be billionaires tomorrow, and move on to bigger and better things. So, but having said that, you know, right now, you know, we've issued the willing and able letter and we're waiting on the preliminary plat approval. And when time comes for final plat approval, based on the situation at hand, you know, either we have a ADEM permit or we don't, we'll make the decision at that time of following through with our commitment for the developer and then what is the best way to fulfill that commitment.
Any other questions?
I do. I have a question. So can you provide a letter to the developer that you will serve? I mean, what's it called?
It's a willing and able.
Not a will serve, you've already done that, but that you're committed. What is it?
Well, usually, a will serve is that you're willing and able to serve.
Right. Can you provide the developer a letter that you're able to serve?
Right. We feel like that letter does that because in the letter, it says, we are willing and able. That letter is good for a period of 12 months and that we're willing and able, subject to the developer meeting all of our terms and conditions, which would include application for service, paying all of the necessary charges and fees, and making sure that his design meets our standard specifications. So we feel like that letter is a sign of our willingness and ability to provide service to that developer, subject to them meeting those conditions.
I don't think our staff thinks that, but I might be mistaken.
I think you are, and I think, you know, they've provided the letter to us that our regulations request, but we don't, we don't need to get in between what they and the developer have agreements with.
Well, I was just looking for more of a commitment for us so we could possibly do something, but.
But I don't think we can ask for any more commitment than what they provided. And we're in the process of verifying what, what their letter said, but I don't think there's any additional commitment level that the regulations provide.
All right. Thank you.
And I'll just add, that's why we put a one-year expiration on that letter, is that helps us manage the commitments, you know? You don't want to get five years down the road and all of a sudden, somebody you thought had moved on and forgotten about the development comes back and, you know, then you have to, you know, make accommodations for them.
Anything else? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Apparently, we need you up here after all. All right. Any other discussion on the Planning Commission?
I guess it sounds like to me, and it is, is, I mean, we have, we're willing to serve it, we're not able to serve it until that permit comes through. You know, we're talking about willing and able. We're willing to do it, but we're not able to do it until, you know, we, until they get their expanded capacity approved.
Staff have anything else, Dan?
Yes, actually, in your previous staff report, we had a comment that the applicant had to provide an updated traffic study. And I would just like to report that we have received the updated traffic study and no new information other than no turn lanes, no warrant, no improvements weren't warranted.
Okay.
But we did receive that.
Yeah.
And just for clarity, too, you know, we talked a little bit during work session about consistency of how we process and handle these kind of situations. You know, there was probably six or eight months ago, we had a very similar situation with a different development that was being served by Robert Stell Utilities. They had their permit, they were under construction, but at the time of preliminary plat approval, they did not have the capacity. So we did a very similar condition to this, saying, you know, we understand that you're underway with this, but we're not going to be able to approve a final plat until, you know, the plant expansion has been accepted by ADEM. So, you know, there is some precedents, there's some consistency with how we handle these kind of situations. They don't, they don't come around often, but when they do come around, we try to be very consistent with how we deal with it.
All right. I think we talked about several options in work sessions, so I think unless somebody not sure, I'm going to ask for a motion.
I'd like to make the motion that we approve with staff conditions. Case number SPP 25-06.
Okay. Have a second?
Seconded.
So we're clear on the motion. So as per staff recommendation, this will allow them then to move forward preliminary plat approval and move forward with getting their subdivision permit. They just will not get a final plat until they have capacity.
That, that's correct. Just, and just to clarify, there's a little step that's not specifically spelled out in the, in the recommendation, but it's in the regulations that 4.5.7, what I mentioned earlier, says it cannot go to construction until all state and federal permits. So without getting into all the nuances of our construction permitting process, that, that's the next trigger point is what's, what's required by 4.5.7 of the subdivision regulations. And that's what has to be resolved by.
All right. So we had the motion, it was seconded. Any comments or questions on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
No.
All right. I can't vote until I find out what. Still roll call, though. I'll be the last.
Mr. Mollick?
No.
Mr. Seibert?
Yes.
Ms. Stradiger?
No.
Ms. Burnett?
No.
Mr. Fletcher?
Yes.
Mr. Waters?
Yes.
They finally put one on me, didn't they? Chairman votes yes. All right. Our remaining items are all public hearing items, so Mr. Dixon, I'll let you come up and make your, address your guidelines.
So we do have, now that we've gotten that behind us, we have several public hearings. Just a reminder, all the items that require public hearings are subdivisions, subdivision variances, highway construction setback appeals, conditional use, site plan approvals, and any ordinance or regulation amendment. So we don't have any of those last ones today. But just for the public, please remember when public comments should only be made during the public hearing portion of the meeting. When you are called by the chairman up to the podium there, please state your name and address into the microphones for the record. It is, speaking is being recorded, so please make sure you speak into the microphone and speak clearly. Comments should be addressed to the Planning Commission Chairman. He can disseminate those comments to whoever's needed. Comments should be focused on the application being presented at that time. And individual comments are limited to three minutes. And if you're here to speak on behalf of a group, just let the chairman know what group you're representing, and he can give you five minutes for those items. For subdivision cases, which we have a few tonight, the state law is very clear that, you know, if it meets all of our regulations, that we have no discretion and must approve it. That's always a big discussion every, pretty frequently. So with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions if you may have any.
With that, we'll open our first item, open the public hearing for case number SC 25-38. This is the re-subdivision of Lot 3, North Royal Estates. Does anybody need to clear prior communication on this item? Ms. Mosley?
Okay. This is for case number SC 25-38, the re-subdivision of Lot 3 of North Royal Estates. It's in Planning District 32 and RSF 1. We're asking for, to make two lots out of the Lot 3 of North Royal Estates, and the minimum lot size will be 1.33. Here's where our subject property is located. Here's the property history, in which I neglected to put into y'all's report. It shows where it was rezoned from RSFE to RSF 1. Subject property again, County Road 97 and Royal Lane. Enlarged to show, this is Lot 3, this is a 1.33, and Lot 3A will be 1.99. Subject property is located on the corner of County Road 97 and Royal Lane in Alberta Community. The proposed is for a re-subdivision of Lot 3 of the North Royal Estates. The re-subdivision will create two residential lots, Lot 3 and Lot 3A. Staff is recommending that the preliminary plat for case number SC 25-38, re-subdivision of Lot 3, North Royal Estates, be approved with conditions. Any future development of the subject properties will need to adhere to the Ballin County Access Management Plan and policies. Any questions?
Okay. Any questions for staff? Okay, thank you. I have Mr. Fernandez. Did you want to speak? No? Okay. Well, that's the only person I had signed up to speak. With anybody else? We don't have that many items, so I'll just ask real quick. Anybody else? Nope? All right. So I'm going to close the public hearing. Nobody has any questions or comments? I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we approve case number SC 25-38 with staff recommendations.
Okay, Mr. Mollick's made the motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Burnett, second the motion. Any questions on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. We'll open the public hearing now for case number SC 25-40, the Reynolds Ready Mix. Does anybody need to clear prior communication on this item? Ms. Booth?
Good evening. So we have SC 25-40 for Reynolds Ready Mix. This is for a two lot, non-residential subdivision. It's located in Planning District 15. It is Zone B1, Professional Business District, and the smallest lot size is going to be 27,870 square feet. This is your aerial map, your zoning map, your utilities and wetlands. There are some potential wetlands on the subject parcel, and their setbacks are shown on the site plan, or the plat, excuse me. Staff does not have any additional comments. This is your layout of the proposed subdivision for Lot 1 and Lot 2. And staff recommends the preliminary plat, final plat approval for case number SC 25-40 for Reynolds Ready Mix be approved, subject compliance with Ballin County subdivision regulations. And I'll answer any questions you may have.
Anybody have any questions for staff? I didn't ask this, Mary, in the meeting, in the work session, it just hit me, but are there any, for any cross easements on this between the two pieces? Do they share access? They share drainage? They share anything that we have to?
I believe the applicant is here, could address any of those questions that you may have, because I don't really have that answer.
Anybody else have any questions? All right. I'll entertain a motion. I'll close the public hearing, then I'll entertain the motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve case number SC 25-40.
All right, Mr. Mollick's made the motion that we approved. Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Burnett, second the motion. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? As I forgot before, chairman votes aye. Brenda's looking at me now, I could feel her looking at me, I just knew it. All right. We'll go to our next item, open the public hearing for case number SC 25-41, Sanctuary Place. Anybody need to clear prior communication on this item? All right, Ms. Booth?
Okay, this request is for preliminary final plat approval for an eight lot residential subdivision. It is in Planning District 22, is zoned RA, Rural Agricultural District. The smallest lot size is going to be 9.98 acres. This is utility information. There are some wetlands that are on the property, and those have been shown on the final plat. This is your proposed lot layout. Staff recommends that the preliminary final plat approval for case number SC 25-41 for Sanctuary Place be approved, subject to compliance with Ballin County subdivision regulations. And there are no specific conditions.
Any questions for staff? All right. Am I, if I see it right, there's no one signed up to speak? Anybody here on this item? Nope? All right. I'll close the public hearing, entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion we approve case number SC 25-41.
All right, Mr. Seibert's made the motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Burnett, second the motion. Any questions on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, we're going to open the public hearing now for case number SC 25-43, the Comstock Place. Does anybody need to clear prior communication on this item? Ms. Mosley?
Okay, this is for SC 25-43, Comstock Estates. This is going to be a five lot subdivision. It's 20 acres in total. The minimum lot size is not 3.99 acres. Is, the subject property is located on the corner of County Road 69 and Wilton Avenue in Rosington Community area. Property history, there's a subdivision exemption for the 20-acre parcel that is in question, in which it was done June 20 of 2025. Here's our location. Subject property on County Road 69 and Wilton Avenue. Enlarge detail of the lots. Subject property is located on the corner of County Road 69 and Wilton Avenue in the Rosington Community area. A subdivision exemption for a common lot line move was approved on June 20, 2025, creating the 20-acre parcel from the original 114-acre parcel. The proposed five residential lots will be accessed from County Road 69, and no common driveways are required per the planning and zoning permit engineer. Staff recommends that the preliminary plat for the case number SC 25-43, Comstock Place, be approved with conditions subject to compliance with the Ballin County subdivision regulations. Specific conditions is any future development of the subject properties will need to adhere to the Ballin County Access Management policies and procedures. Any? Any questions?
All right, any questions for staff? Okay, likewise, I have no one signed up for this one? Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Any comments, questions? I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion, we approve SC twenty-five forty-three.
Subject staff conditions?
Yes, please.
Okay. Mr. Fletcher's made a motion to approve, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Mullick, second the motion. Any questions or comments? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chairman votes aye also. Motion carries. Go to our next item, open the public hearing for case number SPP twenty-five dash seventeen. This is the Tillwood Estates, phase three and four. Does anybody need to clear prior communication on this item? Okay. Ms. Waters?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you mentioned, this is a request for Tillwood Estates, phase three and four. This preliminary plat approval, I mean preliminary plat request is of one-hundred-and-forty-eight residential lots. The subject property is located on the north side of Underwood Road, on County Road point four, and east of County Road nine, and Fish River, and west of County Road forty-nine. As mentioned, this is two phases. Phase three encompasses of about sixty-nine lots, and phase four approximately seventy-nine lots, with the smallest size between two phases, about eight thousand square feet. The density for phase three is approximately three point two acres per unit, units per acre, and for phase four, it is one point one units per acre. Your utilities are Riviera for water, Baldwin EMC for electrical, Baldwin County Sewer, and AT&amp;T for broadband. Traffic study was provided to staff for review and accepted with improvements warranted. The fire, the current fire flow submitted did require additional spacing between the dwellings, and if they make the appropriate improvements by the time final plat's received, they may request to reduce those setbacks to the typical ten-feet setbacks after they've proved that they've made the improvements and they meet the current fire flow requirements. A wetland report prepared by Wetland Science was provided for staff for review and identified jurisdictional and non-jurisdictional wetlands on the property. The PUD site plan, which is the overall site plan for this project, was approved on August third of two thousand twenty-three, as well as the preliminary plat for phase one and two. And per the section nine five-three of the subdivision regulations, a preliminary plat has to be submitted within two years of the previous phase. Staff is recommending approval of case SPP twenty-five seventeen with phase three and four with the following conditions. Condition number one being the turn lane recommended in the revised TIS shall be installed at the specific locations of the recommended phases, one eastbound lane and westbound right turn lanes at both subdivision entrances on Underwood Road, triggered at different phases, an eastbound and westbound turn lane, right turn lane at the intersection of Underwood and fifty-five, triggered by phase six. The water system shall meet all requirements of ISO before preliminary plat is submitted, and a preliminary plat will be submitted for each consecutive phase within two years of the approval of the previously approved phase. Here is your vicinity map. This is of the total project, by the way. And here is your master overall site plan. Phase one and two are currently under construction. Here is your plat for phase three and phase four, sorry, phase three and phase four. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, any questions for staff? Okay. Erin, did you want to speak? Ann or David?
If you guys have any questions, I'd be more than willing.
Okay, so these guys here are representing the developers, so if you have questions for them, anybody?
Got one question. This may be for staff. With the turn lanes and everything, what they, fifty-five and Underwood Road on the south side of fifty-five, there is a large hill there. Is there any plans for any other, maybe a traffic light or something there? Because I've traveled that road and that area, and it's almost a blind hill that you can't see when you're pulling out on fifty-five.
I will defer to one of our engineers for that comment.
There's no plans for a traffic light at that location right now. There's a lot of factors that goes into doing a traffic light. However, we constantly study intersections throughout the county, and we are looking at the fifty-five route for long-range improvements, but for a specific improvement of that intersection at this time, there's not one table.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, that's all I had signed up to speak. Anybody else? All right, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Unless there's other questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we approve case number SPP twenty-five dash seventeen, subject to staff conditions.
All right, Ms. Sykes made a motion to approve, do I have a second? Ms. Burnett, second the motion. Any questions or comments on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chairman votes aye, motion carries. Okay, open public hearing now for case number CSP twenty-five dash twenty-two. This is the Reynolds Ready Mix. Does anybody need to clear prior communication on this item? Ms. Boykin?
All right, this is a request for a commissioned site plan approval. This, hang on, I pulled up the subdivision instead of the CSP. All right, this case is for commissioned site plan approval. The subject property is located in Planning District fifteen. It's on the south side of County Road sixty-four and east of County Road thirteen. The subject property consists of point six-four acres, and it's currently commercial. Here's the locator map. You can see the property highlighted. To the north is zone B two. Some of the property to the south is B one and B two, and to the east is B two. To the west, across County Road thirteen, is the city of Daphne. Here's a picture of the subject property and all of the adjoining properties. The proposed site plan is for rebuilding an office that was destroyed. It conforms to the requirements of the zoning ordinance. Also, the future land use for this property is high-density development, and it is in between a neighborhood and village center. Most of the development pattern in this area is primarily commercial and some residential. Staff believes that this use is consistent with the community welfare and should not distract from the public's convenience at this location. Here is the site plan that the applicant submitted. Here's the future land use map. No landscaping plan was required. They did receive a variance from the Board of Adjustment. And staff recommends approval with the following conditions listed below.
Okay, any questions for staff? Okay, Ms. Burnett?
Can you explain number five of staff recommendations?
Since this triggered the commissioned site plan approval, due to, there's certain criteria, even if it's a permitted use, that triggers, there's five of them. One of these has triggered, I think, the distance to residential area, and that is the reason we had asked them to submit for a commissioned site plan approval. And this is eighteen point ten point one is what the commissioned site plan approval is.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, I have no one signed up on this item. As such, I'll close the public hearing. Unless somebody has comments or questions, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we approve case number CSP twenty-five dash twenty-two, subject to staff conditions.
Okay, Mr. Sykes made a motion to approve, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Fletcher has seconded the motion. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chairman votes aye, motion carries. All right, open the public hearing now for case number CSP twenty-five dash twenty-three, House of Worship. Does anybody need to clear prior communication on this item? All right, Ms. Rhodes?
All right, thank you. This is CSP twenty-five twenty-three for a house of worship. Their request is a change in use from a former bed and breakfast to a house of worship. Here's a location of the property within the county. It's located west of State Highway one eighty-one and south of Champion's Way in Daphne. This is in Planning District fifteen. It's approximately one point six oh acres. Here's the locator and the site maps. The property is surrounded by high-density residential to the north, south, and west, and then to the east is unzoned. It's a cemetery. And here's the subject property and the adjoining property images. In terms of the staff analysis, the site plan for the change of use conforms to the requirements of the zoning ordinance. We see that the area is primarily residential, and we see multifamily use surrounding the property, and then some single-family use to the east, and also a house of worship is a permitted use in all zoning districts. Here's the site plan, the future land use map showing the property is within conservation development potential, as well as some high-density development potential, their grading and drainage plan, and then their landscaping plan. And staff recommends approval of this request with the conditions outlined on the screen.
Okay, any questions for staff? Okay, I have one signed up. And Mommy, I may not have said that right. Did you want, did anyone want to speak?
Good afternoon. My name is Pupukar Miga. I'm here, representing as Ms. Rhodes indicated. Do you have any questions for?
Okay, does anybody have any questions? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
That's all I had signed up to speak, so with that, I will close the public hearing. Unless you have questions or comments, this is our last time, I'll entertain a motion.
I have a question.
Okay.
Is, this one didn't require a CUP, so is number five supposed to be on there for condition? Because churches allow?
It does, but it, like I mentioned during work session, because the CUP and commissioned site plan kind of got combined in the past. That, anything that requires a commissioned site plan that says they're technically performed, permitted by zoning, they're only suitable under certain conditions, they're appropriate locations, certain uses require special consideration. So the way it's worded right now is every, every commissioned site plan has to have that condition on there.
So it can be revoked?
Technically, it could, yes.
Any other questions? All right, public hearing is closed, so I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve case CSP twenty-five dash twenty-three, subject to staff comments and recommendations.
All right, Mr. Mullick's made a motion to approve, do I have a second?
Second.
The strategist seconded the motion. Any questions on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chairman votes aye, motion carries. Okay, that was the last of our items. We'll have no other business. Any public comments? I don't have any indication we have any public comments. Planning Commissioner comments?
Not yet, hold on. Okay, waiting for this to open. So time for our director's report we've been doing lately. Just kind of being slow here for a second, sorry. We do have, I'm waiting for their PowerPoint to open up, but if y'all remember last month, there was a lot of discussions about recycling program and, and, you know, kind of what we're doing on that front of the infrastructure and quite a lot of things. So we do have representative from Solid Waste Authority here to talk about our, everything we've been doing on our recycling program. I think it's some really good books that we, the county's won a lot of awards for that, so I'll turn it over to them, let them go through that.
I'm gonna introduce Terry Graham. She's the Director of our Ballin County Solid Waste Authority, and I just, I want to say, under her direction, that the accomplishments under the Solid Waste Authority is just unbelievable, and what she's fixing to show you is probably, like I told you last time, gonna knock your socks off, because it's very impressive what the Commission and the Ballin County Solid Waste has achieved. So, Terry?
Well, thank y'all for having me. I was, I was kind of excited. I was like, oh, look, somebody else wants to know about what we're doing. So I'm gonna just tell you a little bit about all the things that we have going on since we left the Commission, and if you have any questions, or if you want to ask me something, you can stop me in the middle. It's not gonna hurt my feelings, I promise. So who are we? So we were incorporated in two thousand twenty-three. That's when we split from the County Commission, not because we don't have a great relationship. We're still very much a partner with them, but we just got a little bit bigger, and we had so many different things going on. We just kind of felt like it was a good time for us to basically form more of a public utility. So, you know, we still are providing the weekly garbage service for about fifty-five thousand customers now. We're doing curbside recycling. We do bulky and yard debris pickups. Our facilities, which we have the Baymanett Transfer Station, McBride Landfill, Eastport Landfill, Magnolia Landfill, and we service about twenty-eight hundred customers a week. We're processing or disposing of about seventy-six hundred tons of material weekly. We just opened the Fair Hope Charm. That's a charm. It's a center for hard-to-recycle materials, so that was a great moment for us last month. We're still providing the drop-off recycle locations throughout the county. We do the countywide litter patrol services for all the unincorporated, or the county maintained roads. And then we also have our own call center. A lot of people probably don't know that. We don't bill on any public utility with a water company or anything like that. We do that all ourselves, so. This is a picture of our new facility. It was open on January twentieth of this year. And so this is a picture of the And so this is a picture of the line. So this line, it's a green machine line. It was actually manufactured here in the United States. It was a company out of New York. To date, since we opened in January, we've accepted over two thousand loads of material, and we've done twenty-seven hundred tons of recycling. So we've shipped out ninety truckloads, and then that's about nineteen hundred tons. So it takes us a little bit of time. Our floor is pretty clean right now. We've done a lot of work this week. But, you know, that's why there's a difference in the tonnages there. So a lot of people want to know how much this investment was. We did go, you know, this is another reason to split from the commission. We did go and sell municipal bonds for this project and some others, but this, this facility cost us about twenty-eight point six million dollars. So you can see kind of where we are to date. We're not actually quite finished with the building, but we're getting really close now. So we actually have a lot of really great partners that have helped us with this project. So I'd just like to make sure that we highlight them. So we've gotten a little over seven million dollars in grant funding to help us with all the different components. So Recycle Partnership, A.D.M., and of course, the county commission, they gave us some ARPA funds, which was the biggest money that we got. One of the biggest things for our material recovery facility is our Waste and Recycle Adventure Center. I'm so proud of this. It really just highlights not only what recycling can do for our area, but also like what we do with waste in general, how we manage the water, how we manage the air, or the methane that's coming off the landfill. So this is a, kind of a pic, couple of pictures of the first floor of our Waste and Recycle Adventure Center. So each floor has about ten different stations that you can go through. So it's very interactive. We've had over, just at sixty tours that we've, that we've done since April, and I think it's just over seven hundred people that have actually visited our, our facility. So this is the, the first floor rendering, or they're not even renderings, these are real pictures. You can see our ballot wall, that's, that's the biggest picture. That's a really big hit. So it's like, how many aluminum cans do you think went into this bail, or how many plastic bottles? And usually, people really like to guess that number, and they're usually nowhere close. So this is kind of upstairs. So we talk a little bit more about waste management in general. So we kind of talk about Magnolia landfill's layout, all the different things that we're doing there. We have a new gas-to-energy plant on site, so we talk about that process and, you know, what cleaning up that gas looks like. And then we talk about, you know, the leachate management. And then, one of my favorite things, and I don't have a picture of it here, is we have these video booths up there that actually talk about, you know, once the material leaves our material recovery facility, where is that material going? And mainly, it goes to different places in Alabama, and people don't realize that. So we have, we partnered with KW Plastics in Troy, Endurama, in Athens, Alabama, of course, Novellas, and then International Paper and some other e-coveries. So we've really kind of tried to highlight, you know, this isn't, this isn't all for nod. We're not just making up what we're doing. This is really having a purpose. We're putting it back into the economy, and it is actually creating a circular economy right here in, in the South. So we do better than what people think. I think we, as a South, we get a bad rap for recycling, but hopefully, we're, we're making a better name for ourselves. This is some renderings of the Fair Hope Charm. I don't, we just opened it on August the seventh, so I don't have any, like, real good drone footage of that site, but super proud of it. It's a small footprint right across from the, the little elementary school right there on Bishop Road. But we had eighty-five customers our first month, so I was really excited about that. I think, once we can actually move the other recycle bins from the courthouse, we'll get even more. But for right now, I was pretty pleased with that. This is the renderings of the charm we're going to have at Magnolia, and it's going to be just right next to the material recovery facility, because citizens can't come into the actual facility itself for liability reasons. So we have the, we want to open four other charms. So we'll have Fair Hope in Magnolia, and then we'll have Spanish Fort, Orange Beach, Robertstall, and Baymanet. Orange Beach has already been awarded, so we're going to start construction on that one soon. Spanish Fort has been designed. Baymanet is being bid out right now. We had our pre-bid today, so it should be awarded next month. And then Robertstall would, would be after that one. So these are the different things that we take at our charm facilities. We take all the regular recycle items that you can take to the MRF with the addition of electronics, batteries, tanks, extinguishers, household hazardous waste, and light bulbs, and some other things to basically, the message we're trying to tell people is if you don't know what to do with it, take it to a charm, and we'll figure it out for you. Sorry. And the biggest thing with that is the, all these things would actually damage our line really bad, and it would be very dangerous for our employees at the MRF. So the stuff that we can keep out of there, we've already gotten live ammunition, all kind of crazy crap that people shouldn't be, shouldn't be putting in their recycling, but they do. So that's, that's the reason we're investing in these charms, is to keep our employees Sorry. So we still have the twenty-three unmanned drop-off locations. This is the one in the back parking lot. And most of these are not going to go away, but if they're close to one of our manned locations, it probably will. But as of today, we're not going to remove any of them. We also started curbside recycling in June. So this is kind of small. You probably can't see it very well, but we basically broken the county up into ten different sections. So we're offering them basically in three-month intervals, so that we can cover the entire county. So we've had two that are active right now. We have another pod that'll start in October. And then you can see, we're just going to keep going until we get the whole county covered, and that won't, we won't be complete until the end of twenty twenty-six. And I know everybody's been calling and saying, well, why can't you just do mine? Well, it doesn't really work like that. So this is the easiest way for us to develop a route. So look for your area, and when we come in, you'll get something in the mail from us, so that you, you know it's your time to sign up. So what is it that we want to do next? We've been working regionally to expand recycling to a lot of the companies up and down Mobile River. I'm going to go over there in a couple of weeks and speak at the Partners for Environmental Progress meeting that they're having. A lot of them have already come to see me about how can we take their material, what can we do to partner with them? We actually, we want to start doing some school, school activities, any other commercial programs that we can implement. I got a grant this year for a trailer, a STEAM-certified trailer, that we can actually take our educational experience out into the community and teach them. I always say, we like to have a festival for about anything in Baldwin County, so if we could take that out into the community and kind of show people what we're doing. So A.D.M. was gracious enough to give us a grant for that this year, so we're working on designing that. And then down the road, we'd like to start doing some food waste composting. That's a permit change for us at Magnolia, so that would probably be last on the list, but it's, it's not, it's not off the table. A lot of people ask about that one. See, other neat thing, kind of shifting away from recycling of actual commodities to our gas-to-energy plant. So this is a rendering of the plan itself. And then here's a little video that's going to show you a little bit more about that. So that video explains that a lot better than I could, because there's so many different components to it. But we started actually putting gas into the pipeline back in February, and we actually started that process in twenty nineteen. So that was a long project, and we are very excited for that to actually have come to fruition, so. So that's pretty much all we got going on, I think. There's probably some more stuff that I have forgotten, but if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Are y'all accepting glass at all of the locations for drop-off, or is it just at the charms?
Just at the charms.
Okay.
Not the unmanned locations.
And what are y'all doing with the glass?
So we're probably going to partner, we've got a couple of different options, but it'll probably ultimately go to strategic materials in Atlanta. There are some other places around the state that are kind of looking at some different glass options. There's also a company in Birmingham called Glass Half Full, and they're doing some coastal restoration projects with it. But fiberglass seems to be the most, they have the biggest need for recycled glass. So there's a plant just outside, just over the Georgia line, kind of outside Auburn that way, that we visited. So that's kind of where we're thinking, but you never know.
Thanks.
I have a question about your map for pickup.
Yeah.
You know, curbside pickup, I'm assuming?
Mm-hmm.
You're going to provide it county-wide?
Yes. So if you're, if you're in a municipality and you don't offer curbside recycling to your residents, we're going to offer that for them. So yes, whenever your pod comes up, it would be offered, city or county. So the only municipalities that offer it right now are Foley, Fair Hope, Orange Beach, and Gulf Shores.
Thank you.
I have a question. When you, as these curbside, you know, as we adopt different parts of the county into your program, you know, is that, is, does that go along with our trash, or is there, you know, are, are you going to request, or would you request, you know, is it an additional charge to have this recycle bin that's at your place?
It will be. It's a subscription service, so you're going to actually have to sign up for it, unlike the garbage service, which is mandatory. So it'll be ten dollars a month, and that'll come with the container. So right now, our fee is seventeen dollars a month just for garbage, bulky yard debris pickups, so this will be an extra ten.
I guess, is it, is it illegal to make it mandatory?
Um.
I mean, where, you know, this is, I mean, I know, I mean, I shared in a meeting a couple of months ago, or whenever, I said, when I started recycling, my, a third of what was going in the trash can now goes in the recycle. So it's, a third is going maybe for a good use, and only two-thirds is going to the landfill.
That's right.
But I mean, as far as mandating it, I mean, it's.
You could.
You almost need everybody on board for this, or, you know, if your trucks are making the route, they, I mean, and it's, I hate to say it's, I feel like it's what we need to be doing as a community. I mean, our landfill, the, the slower we fill our landfills, the better.
Right. And I think the, the biggest thing is it is an actual commodity that we can reuse. So, I mean, the things that you can do with these products now that maybe were not an option, you know, twenty years ago, we have that option now. But I think mandatory recycling would be a hard sell at this point, just because of where we live, because landfilling is so cheap. But I'm not the one that would make that decision.
It may be, that may be something that changes in time.
That's right. The A.D.M. did up our state's recycling rate this past year when they changed those regs, so we're now at, I think it's thirty-five percent, which we had been at twenty-five for a while. So they are starting to put more pressure on communities to step up the recycling, so you never know.
Are you compensated for, like, if you send an aluminum billet somewhere? Do you get paid for that?
We do. Aluminum is the highest-priced commodity, but, I mean, basically, one bail is, you know, about thirty thousand cans, and it's equivalent to about a thousand dollars. So it's, yes, it does help. Does it pay for the operation? All right.
Thank you, Terry.
Thank y'all.
So got a couple more things real quick. One, just a little quick update on the rezonings from last month. The county commission, there were only three, well, there was only three applications. One of them withdrew. The first one was District thirty-nine, it was RSF one to RSF three. After a lot of discussion, the applicant ended up withdrawing that application. I think it was not looking favorable to be approved, so they withdrew it rather than let it be denied. So that one was withdrawn, so no action on that one. We had two other smaller ones, Friendship Park, which is just outside of Daphne there, off of sixty-four, rezoned from B one to LB. We don't see a whole lot of LB, but LB is limited business, so it's even a more limited business. There's more, it's, it's, it's a funny district, because it actually allows more uses, but less intensity. The size of those uses has to be smaller. So it's a good little neighborhood business that we just don't see a lot of. This is a good spot for it. So it was approved. And then we had another one in District fifteen, RSFE to RA. You can see the map there on top left, and it was approved as well. So looking at our permit trends, we've been kind of showing you guys for a while. You know, we're still staying very consistent over the last three years on our number of preliminary plats, almost straight line across, you know, year-to-date so far. Final plats, also very consistent. Subdivision exemptions, you know, there's still quite a few of those out there. We're a little, little, little lower than last year, but a little higher than, than twenty-three. Number of PUDs are still down some, but we're seeing that creep up now. I don't know that we had any this month, but we, all the mini-storage and multi-tenant developments are PUDs now, so, you know, that, that number will continue to go up. As far as, you know, density of things have been improved, so the preliminary plot lots, we talk about every month, there was a huge spike in that in twenty-three. It's kind of normalized over the last couple of years, staying pretty consistent. But you can see a lot of those preliminary plots, lots that were approved in twenty-three making it the final plat now, so you see the number of lots coming through in final plats are, are on the trend up. But that's kind of that two-year lag time it takes for, for developments to really occur and get lots to the market. Subdivision exemption lots, I just show this every month, just to show the, the number of lots that are involved in those. It's, that's kind of a, a big thing we battle, you know, and work through on every month, the amount of exemptions that go through. But, you know, that's, that is quite a few lots that go through that process, which is administrative process. And the number of PUD units are down. There was a, a very large spike in twenty-three. I think that was primarily a lot of RV parks and things like that back then that had that spike. When it comes to zonings, we're still seeing that, that trend of increase in rezonings. And again, a lot of those are occurring in some of the newly-zoned districts, so there's some corrective zonings occurring. But we are seeing, the last two months, we've only had three zoning applications, so that, that trend is kind of slowing a little bit. PRDs, we've had two so far this year, with zero compared to last, this time last year. Number zoning variances are continuing to trend down, which is also a really good sign about how, how clear and clean our regulations have become since we've gone through the process of updating them. We're not requiring a whole lot of variances anymore, because things are a lot, lot more clear about what the requirements are. about what the requirements are, which has kind of solved that problem. Commercial site plans, you know, are still kind of fairly consistent, a little bit down, but, you know, still kind of pretty consistent with years passed. Yeah, interagency coordination, we don't really have a whole lot to discuss more about that this month. But, you know, I'd be glad to answer any questions about any of our trends or anything going on in the department if you guys have any questions. Thank you all.
That it?
That's it.
Yeah. Anybody else have any questions or comments on planning commission?
I have one question.
Sorry I asked, but go ahead.
It's on... It's in regards to our county right-ofways and signs being erected in them, whether they're political signs, they're subdivision signs. You pull up to a stop sign and you look to the left, well, I mean, you got to just because they've got, you know, it's the... I mean, they bring these... These are big signs. You know, do we have any... Are they lawful to do some of this? Or is it just get done and really maybe not much said about it? I mean, you know, I don't want to say some of it's a little obtrusive, and I know we go through political seasons. That's kind of one thing. That comes and goes. But, I mean, these... And I guess it's what... I mean, do these developers get a permit to put up a four-by-eight sign to advertise their development that's a quarter mile away? I mean, how do these... How does this work?
So that's a good question.
I mean, I pulled them out of our fields, and I mean, the guys say, well, where does this come? But you can't do... I mean, it's like, it's in the middle. It's in the field.
Well, to answer... There's kind of a multifaceted question there, and I'm going to kind of break it apart a little bit. No, we do not permit those type of signs in the right-ofway. And we would not permit those style of signs in the right-ofway either. I mean, so they don't come to us for a permit, and we don't permit them. However, they do show up. The Realtor signs... Well, let me go back and hit your first point. When you pull to an intersection, if there is a sight distance issue or safety issue, that is paramount for us to address. So if anyone listening or anyone on the board, if anyone in the audience sees that type of situation, please notify the highway department immediately. We will take immediate action to address that safety concern. That's first and foremost. Secondly, we don't have sign police, especially this time in this season when there are signs all over just about all right-ofways. So we address those as we can and as we go through and as they are... We encounter them, say, well, they're mowing operations. We will address them, but we do not have staff to drive around every day just to remove signs unless it's a safety issue. You mentioned if it's on private property, that's between, you know, obviously, you know, it's your property, you address it how you see fit. And... But we handle it on a case-by-case basis. And again, I encourage, if someone sees a problem that's a safety problem, please let us know.
Thank you.
Okay. We are adjourned until our October meeting, which I will not be at. So I've talked to Brandon. Brandon will ask, co-chair will fill in for that meeting. All right. We're adjourned.